Is that what we're doing tonight?
This girl went here. Isn't that something?
Okay, we ready? If we could call the meeting to order, everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Present. Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mr. McHugh.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, are we still waiting for one of the students?
Uh, we think, we think there was some illness involved today, so we're...
Okay, do you want to wait a few minutes, or, because we can go to the other parts of the agenda just for a few minutes?
Uh, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, any objection to skipping over the Spotlight on Excellence, we're waiting still for a student who may be arriving? So we'll move to the minutes, um, the minutes from the January seventeen meeting, the motion to accept by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. McHugh, all those in favor say aye, any opposed, the minutes are accepted. Under permission to enter, Madam Superintendent?
Uh, yes, one contract I'm recommending to the school committee with Robert F. Kennedy Children's Action Corps Incorporated, forty-eight thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars to provide for the out-of-district tuition cost for one student enrolled and receiving services as outlined in their special education IEP, funding provided by the special education department budget for tuition, out-of-district tuition.
Any questions? Motion approved by Ms. Martin, seconded by, uh, Mr. Leary, roll call, please.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay, we have a number of memorials, uh, three by the committee as a whole, offered by the committee as a whole, one for Christopher Sem, Lowell High School student, son of Merklin School paraprofessional, Saradi Che, and brother of William Sem, Lowell High School sophomore. Gerald P. Prescott, retired custodian and father of Michael Prescott, Wayne Middle School resource officer, and Patrick PJ Moriarty, nine-year-old grandson of Lincoln School special education nurse Jan Ashimbo. And additional memorials offered by Ms. Fattacante for Irene Baxter, sister of Edward Byrne, retired Washington School principal, and aunt of Annabelle Melanazo, Green Oak School teacher. Eleanor M. Otis, retired special education teacher at the Bailey School. Elizabeth J. Landry, account clerk in the food service department, sister-in-law of Terry Coolyard, central office receptionist, and also the aunt of Christopher Landry, teacher at the Rogers Middle School, for Edward Gregoire, retired Cardinal O'Connell and McCavenu School custodian. Mary Nugent, mother of Elaine Nugent, adult education's teacher. For Sheila Legidacy, retired Lowell High School teacher and wife of Frank Legidacy, also a retired Lowell High School teacher. And for Shirley Smith, Jean Saxby, the mother of Karen Briere, Barnum School clerk. If we could all rise in a moment of silence and darken chambers in their memory, please. May they rest in peace. Do you want to proceed, Mr. Murphy? Or you want to wait a few more minutes?
Yeah, we'll proceed.
Okay, all right, we have a follow-up on the Spotlight of, on Spotlight on Excellence that we had last month. A program at the Robinson School, and we'll recognize the principal, Robert Murphy, to tell us about some additional awards that came out of the, I believe it was the stock market program at the school. Mr. Murphy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Superintendent, members of the Lowell School Committee. The Robinson School is proud to return this evening to complete the Spotlight on Excellence that was begun at the last school committee meeting. The reason for our return, the day before, uh, we came before the committee at its last meeting, we were notified the two of our students, a fifth grader and an eighth grader, had won the essay contest for the state of Massachusetts, uh, for the invest-rite essay contest. We were very proud about that, very excited, uh, but we were also told that the information was embargoed and that we could not mention it to everyone, because they were coming to deliver the prizes in person, uh, actually the following day. So we were very excited about it, but at the same time, sort of frustrated that we couldn't mention it to you all. In hindsight, it was a good thing that that happened, because on the way, the executive director of the foundation, Elizabeth Rydel, was notified in transit that another Robinson School student had placed tenth in the nation. And that information was embargoed from the state until the morning of the presentation. As a matter of fact, the executive director, who was coming to present the awards to the students, did not have the trophy, because the national board would not send the trophy. That's how secretive this competition was. There was eleven thousand five hundred entries in the competition. With me tonight are two of the students who have won this honor for the Robinson School. One could not be with us tonight because of illness. First of all, from grade five, Ryan McKennedy, who won the first-place division Massachusetts State Elementary Division.
Good job.
Also, winning, uh, the eighth, uh, grade eight, first place in the middle school division for the state of Massachusetts, Dylan Miller, who is sick this evening, uh, but we wanted to recognize him also. So congratulations to Dylan, sure you're watching at home. And finally, our national division winner of the eleven thousand five hundred entries. These were, uh, judged blindly, uh, there were five rounds of blind competition for the Massachusetts State winners, and another five rounds of blind competition for the national winners. Blind competition means that everything was removed, the judges did not know what state they were from, they did not know what district they were from, so it was all very fantastically even throughout the entire country. So we're very proud of our grade-five, tenth-place national elementary winner, Daniella Owasu. All of these students won cash prizes, um, in various amounts. They were all, they all received a congratulatory letter, and they, we will all be going, uh, to, invitation to the Boston Globe Annual Awards Dinner in May, um, so we'll be proud to take our students there also. I also, of course, would like to again mention Susan MacLeod, who, uh, was the bringer of this to the Robinson School, and it's a very proud day for Susan. And I also want to mention all of the faculty of the Robinson School. When you begin to win national essay and state essay contests, it's the result of excellence in teaching by the entire Robinson School staff, so I'm very, very proud tonight to have been able to come back and share this fantastic information with all of you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy and Ms. MacLeod, I would, I would just point out for the, uh, for the members of the audience here that this was some, a program, the stock market program, that initiated in Ms. MacLeod's math lab class, yet these were written essays that the students won, so it really is a testament to the cross-discipline work that is being done at the Robinson School, and we congratulate all of you on your fine work and your achievement, and a special congratulations to the students who work so hard, thank you. Mr. Leahy.
I just wanted to offer congratulations from the entire committee, and, um, is there any room to get my kids in over at the Robinson School? So, gonna make sure. Well, I'll move.
That'll come up later in the meeting. Okay, thank you all very much, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you like, but we understand if you want to get home and get working on your homework, or have dinner, or whatever, whatever it is you need to do. So thank you very much. We will move, um, to the motions. The first motion is by Mr. Leahy, for the superintendent to review and report to the school committee on the school lunch program with special attention to nutritional value, appeal, cost, and ways to improve the satellite lunch program.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Fattacante, Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. I just put this motion in, I was wondering if, uh, it'd be nice if we could review, uh, lunch menu, and, um, I don't know when the last time it was reviewed, but, um, after seeing a few of the lunches served at our schools, I thought maybe it was time. For the most part, you know, they're healthy portions, they're nutritional, but, um, some lunches could, could, uh, probably be taken off the menu, and some new, new lunches put on there, so I don't know what, if this goes to a subcommittee or if this just goes to a department, but, um, either way, just, uh, it's time maybe to, to look this over, and, um, I know costs are always an issue, um, but with the new wellness program, maybe we need to take a look at the, you know, different aspects, so, thank you.
Ms. Fattacante.
To you, Your Honor, to the superintendent and to my colleague, we did a review of the high school a year or so ago. So Mr. Leahy's looking at K through eight at this, with this motion?
Um, yeah, basically, if it affects the high school, look at that too, but, right now, I'm focusing on K to eight.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure what subcommittee would, uh, take a look at this.
It, it doesn't even, you know, if it doesn't need to go to a subcommittee, that's fine, but whoever, whatever department.
Ms. Dougherty.
I think the wellness stuff has gone through the curriculum subcommittee, I, I'm sorry to remind you of that.
But again, I mean, the work could be done and then just presented to us, I mean, basically, you know, um...
Look, Connie did the workshop.
No, Connie's, you know...
If I could just add one thing.
Ms. Dougherty.
I, I don't know that we've looked at the satellite lunch program. Uh, 'cause I know even, you know, with the, um, at the high school level, we have the alternative schools that are involved in the satellite lunch program too, so I think that would be worth reviewing, the satellite program.
Right, but there's a fifty million dollar solution for that, when we build the two new schools, we don't have any satellite lunches left, so, but, um...
We will at the alternative schools.
Oh, maybe, yeah. All right, well, I, I'll let you decide, Superintendent, what department it goes to and what they need to do, and then they can just bring some recommendations back, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye, any opposed, the motion's approved. Next motion by Mr. Leahy, the superintendent report on the adequacy of preparation provided for students to succeed in college and/or work, including a report on the schools our graduates are attending and their rate of graduation from those schools. Seconded by Ms. Dougherty, Mr. Leahy.
Um, thank you. This report, what I'm looking for is, um, just to see where our high school graduates are going to, what schools, just to make sure they're staying in school, they're graduating, um, basically, are we preparing them for graduation? If they go to work, how are they doing, uh, but mostly, if they are going to college, two-year, four-year, are they successful at it? So I don't know when the last time we looked at that, but maybe, you know, it's about time we took one more look at it and just make sure we're on track, thank you.
All those in favor of the motion say aye, any opposed, the motion's approved. Next motion by Mr. Leahy, request the superintendent provide the committee with information on the possibility of broadcasting subcommittee meetings either on LTC or Lowell Educational TV, seconded by Ms. Fattacante.
And I also think that my colleague, Ms. Dougherty, a couple of months ago, had something for some, unless you want to be using some finger paint. I don't know if you want to be...
Mr. Leahy.
We'll stay away from that, thank you. Um, this one actually is just kind of piggybacking on Counselor Broderick's motion, um, mayor, that was on Tuesday night. So just to keep us on board with the city council, um, which is working on the same issue. So, um, you know, whatever's easier, if we can work together, if, if we could use Channel twenty-two, or we can't, or if we needed to just combine our efforts to get some, uh, subcommittees on air.
Thank you. I would, uh, I know the city council's going to be looking at this, but it's really a, um, a question of, uh, allocation of resources to, um, you know, the municipal channel. I think if the committee were interested in using Channel twenty-two, I think that's going to impact the programming that we have there, so I think that is an issue for this committee.
Sure.
But I can tell you, I think there are going to be, uh, some changes in this on the council side, uh, pretty quickly, so... But certainly, and I, it may take a while to get the mayor's reception room tele, uh, capable of being televised, so we try for meetings here, of course, if there are more council meetings here, there's going to be less opportunity for school committee meetings in this room, and so, you know, the, the high school studio may not be a bad alternative, but, um, I, but certainly, uh, the council is aware of this, and I think the goal is to get as many of these meetings as possible, and hopefully, before too much longer, all of them being televised.
I, I just also wanted to add too, that, um, does the cable on, on the city side, does the, uh, cable contract come up pretty soon? Do we negotiate that, or?
Uh, it's, I don't know about the, the contract with Comcast, but I believe the contract with LTC is, is up in the fall.
I guess what I was thinking is that, you know, with, everybody want, everybody would like to see the subcommittees and the meetings televised, that, um, it may be, um, a question of, you know, do we need another local cable channel once we do get whatever rooms wired for, for, um, to broadcast these meetings? So I didn't know if that would influence, or would have bare factor on when you're negotiating or doing whatever you do with your cable contracts, that that might be something that needs to look, be looked at too, so...
I mean, I, I don't necessarily think it's an issue with the availability over the air, I think it's the availability of personnel to film the meetings, and in fact, one of the things I think we're going to be looking at is to engage some student volunteers from Middlesex, UMass Lowell, and it may be, uh, an opportunity to integrate, uh, some high school, uh, students as part of that volunteer effort, so, certainly, all that is under discussion and is going to be looked at in depth.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Leary.
Just real quick, I, I, and I support the motion made by Mr. Leahy, I just, I don't know if this is appropriate this, at this time, or if Mr. Leahy would mind, I know that the city council also has access to email, and I think the way they do their email, it goes into a central location, and then emails are distributed to the appropriate committee member or all the committee members. If that's something, I don't know if my colleague would mind if we could add that into reviewing it, I know, you know, communication being, being what it is, email is one of the most effective ways of, uh, of communicating with, with, uh, the parents out, and parents and taxpayers. I don't, again, I think the way the city council does it, it isn't like an email's sent directly to Jimmy Leary's email, it's sent to a gen, a, a central location, and then it's disseminated to the appropriate committee members, so someone's not actually getting someone's home email. I think that's the way it actually would, would, would work, but if we could look into that, I don't know if you could, would, would mind adding? I don't want to make an amendment, if we just add that to the regular motion, thank you.
Well, it should be an amendment, if you're going to add something, it should be an amendment.
Motion to amend this to also include email access for committee members by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor of the amendment say aye, any opposed, the amendment's approved. I know in the council, I think it's a matter of individual choice, Mr. Leary, if they want their home email or if they want some city email, so that, that's really a matter of preference for the members, but certainly, we can incorporate school committee members in, in the system. Okay, all those in favor, favor the motion as amended, say aye, any opposed, the motion's approved. Next motion, uh, joint motion by Mr. Leahy and Mr. Leary, to direct the superintendent and appropriate staff to relocate all of the usable items currently in storage for future use by school department at the old Butler School, donate to nonprofit organizations, usable items determined to be in excess of needed supply for school department use in the foreseeable future. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Mr. Leary.
I, I think it's a timely motion, obviously, with, we're looking at the potential replacement of the Butler School, the old Butler School into the Sappisera School, and even if that's not reality, I think it's also something where we do have items that we are using or could be using, we want to make sure they're protected.
Anything further? All those in favor of the motion say aye, any opposed, the motion is approved. Subcommittee reports, first report is on the joint school committee and city council subcommittee on school buildings. Mr. McHugh.
Yes, just briefly on an update, uh, since our last meeting, there was a meeting at the city council, I believe it was on the January twenty-third, where both projects were reviewed, and a presentation was made jointly from the school department administration and the, also the city manager, to the full council. At that meeting, there was a motion by, I believe, Eileen Donahue, to actually go to our state delegation and ask the Department of Education to defer the January thirtieth, uh, deadline, to make a decision on which way we would approach the two projects, uh, until the, the bids, uh, have come in through the process we were going through. We have since heard word that that has been granted, and we expect the bids to hopefully come in by the end of March, where then the city will have a follow-up discussion on which way to approach, uh, the projects from a financial standpoint, because they both have different implications on which way we would pursue them. So that's just more or less an update, uh, as a report of progress, I'm sure, uh, I believe also the bids are going to be staggered as well, which will give us hopefully better bid prices, so that they're not, uh, bidding the same two projects at once. So those will be forthcoming, and we'll be keeping up a abreast of the, as they come in, thank you.
Thank you. It was good work by the, uh, state delegation to get that extension of time for us, so, uh, offer our thanks to them for their efforts. Motion to accept the report by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next, uh, report on the Lowell High School Subcommittee, uh, report and approval of the minutes of the January thirty-first, two thousand and seven meeting, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor, yes, we did meet on January thirty-first. School committee members present included myself, Regina Fattacante, James Leary, as well as Connie Martin and John Leahy. Also present from central office were Jean Franco and Anne Murphy, and others included William Samaris, the Lowell High School headmaster, Dr. Wendy Jack, Carrie Lynch, Roxanne Howe, and Robert McCarthy, who's a housemaster at Lowell High, Fred Abissey, our adult education director, Greg Cruto, the UTEC executive director, and Dirk Noldler, UTEC diploma school coordinator. We had eight items on the agenda, I will fly through them, and then if my colleagues have any comments they'd like to add or questions, we can deal with that. Uh, the first item was the African Parents Survey, which is to come, and that will be distributed to members at administration when we receive that. The second one was an update on the alternative diploma program, which we learned, uh, by, from Bob Murphy, that, Murphy, that, Bob McCarthy, I'm sorry, uh, the curriculum is a hundred percent completed for the alternative diploma program, which is that, uh, program that would join Lowell High School with adult education and UTEC. And it, the classes will be held at UTEC using Lowell High teachers who will teach after the regular school day. The curriculum's a hundred percent complete, as I said, the teachers have been hired, students have been contacted who are eligible for this program, and we have twenty-five students who have accepted. Uh, the target rate for the program is fifteen, but we were thinking we may lose some students, we thought we'd start with a twenty-five number, and the schedule's been updated, so that program is ready to go as an alternative startup program, will begin March first, assuming all the construction is ready at UTEC. Uh, we had a discussion about how the program will incorporate internships and outside learning experiences for students, and that many of these students may have already passed MCAS, but if they haven't, they will obviously have to in order to earn a high school diploma. The motion by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leary, is to recommend to the committee as a whole, accept the program and continue to report progress of this initiative to the school committee. So we, should we vote on that, or you want me to keep going?
We, we can approve the, our motion to accept the program and continue to report on progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante.
No.
Okay, all those in favor say aye, any opposed, the motion's approved.
Okay, the...
Excuse me, can I just get a point of clarification? Did we, now, when we say we're voting to, uh, accept it, did we already accept this program though? Or we just accepted it now?
I think we've already accepted it, we're just moving forward.
Okay, all right.
We're getting more information as it's, um, really been put together.
Before they accepted this, I remember, I took it.
All right, continue.
You want to take another one, just to make sure you can, but...
That's okay.
Uh, the next item really discussed our, um, the Lowell Plans Committee on Lowell High School, had met with the school committee, I want to say about a month ago, and discussed, uh, proposals to have a facilities needs assessment done, and I think we brought that before the whole committee, back when that happened. So the discussion was what the status was of that at this point, um, and Headmaster Samaris reported to us that the, the Lowell Office of Planning and Development was planning on touring the high school to do a, an initial needs assessment, uh, looking at what we've got available for space and rooms and things like that. And after some discussion, the subcommittee felt that this was different from the original plan as it was presented to us by the Lowell Plan High School Subcommittee. Uh, so the motion was to recommend to the committee as a whole that we go through the process of drafting an RFP for the next high school Subcommittee meeting, that we go forward with the original intent as it was presented to us by the Lowell, the Lowell Plan Subcommittee, and that is to come up for, uh, with an RFP to hire an outside consultant, uh, the fees of which would be covered by the Lowell Plan, to do this initial assessment of what our facility needs are at the high school. So that was a motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Fattacante, to go through the process of a draft RFP for the next Lowell High School Subcommittee meeting.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of that motion say aye, any opposed, motion's approved.
Okay, who, who moved it?
Ms. Fattacante. Ms. Fattacante, and seconded by Mr. Leary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, continue.
Okay, the next item was, we talked about the alternative school staffing at Lowell High School, our programs to really support and provide alternative services for students who are not able to succeed in the high school setting at Lowell High. Specifically, Carrie Lynch, the Coordinator for Student Support Services, discussed with us the need for an additional staff person at the Malloy School, which is the high school's, one of the high schools' alternative programs. And the high school talked about the possibility of trading an ESL position next year to fund this alternative education teacher at the Malloy so that we could continue to keep the staffing for, as we go into the new school year in September. We also discussed the idea of the clerical sharing that has to go on right now. Lowell High School clerks are picking up some of the clerical duties at the alternative school, but there is a need for more, really documentation and tracking of students. And I think in particular, the success rates, how do they do when they transition back to the high school? You know, what, what are we doing in terms of our strengths and weaknesses in this program? Some of the other discussion that came out was, right now, the Malloy is serving a lot of different students with different needs and issues. I mean, some students are there with behavior problems, and, you know, other students are there because of emotional or trauma issues, or they just really have a hard time in the large setting of the main high school. And there's some discussion about looking at if that's really the best way to help these students, to have them all grouped together, and it also considering the, the lack of flexibility in terms of the space that we have right now at the Malloy. But we did talk about how there are other issues in terms with long-term conflicts, that we have people who have long-term conflict issues, and we put them both at this very small segregated program at the Malloy. So that is some, some areas that we will continue to look at, as well as the tracking of the success of the students as they go through the program. The motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Fattacante, is to recommend the committee accept this report as a report of progress, and to look at other modes for evening programs and a two-year plan should be, be developed in the future, that we are going to look towards really coming up with some solutions to these issues. And we just really wanted to inform the committee of that, if anybody has.
Mr. Leary?
Just real quick, I, I thank you for the Chair, Chairwoman Dougherty. That's a great, we had a great discussion regarding our alternative programs. Some of the things that the, the Headmaster and his folks have been doing is going out to the other schools in the Commonwealth, that some of the schools like Lynn and Brockton have, I think, more of a, I guess, a Cadillac version of an alternative schools. Are they utilizing it to get after, not get after, but really work with an additional number of students? I think they're almost not twice as high as what we are right now, but they're, they're larger, and their school populations are smaller. I do want to commend Kathy Arcasian and William Samaris, the Headmaster, for having an additional staff member or teacher over at the Malloy School for the second half of the semester. I believe we're going to be adding additional 10 to 12 students who are, what we call, I guess, some of the discipline issues, so we can help, really help the teachers in the whole, high school, you know, doing what they, what they do best, educating students. And hopefully, we'll help some of the students that, that are over at the Malloy to really achieve where they need to be in, in, in the program. I really, I, I tell you, this is something I think next year, we need to take a look at when we budget to add additional staff as well as space if we need to. What I will be trying to do, and I think the whole committee will be, will be working on, is with, with the Headmasters, is really getting a concrete number of how many students that are disruptive in the high school that need to be extracted and put into a setting like the Malloy, so we have a, basically a twofer, helping the students and the teachers in the high school to achieve maximum, you know, efficiency, and helping the students that are disruptive so they can really go out and realize their goals, get the high school diploma past the MCAS. So I think so far, I think this presentation was, was a good dialogue. I appreciate having the Student Support Specialist with Dr. Coleman over there to assist with some of the needs that are at the Malloy. I think it's imperative that we do get some clerical support either a couple days a week or, you know, full-time would be nice, but that might not be reality. So I think the small changes that the Headmaster has already made, I, I just, I'm just very grateful, and I want to commend him for that. I do think we need to enhance it next year and take a look at it, and I, and I appreciate Carrie Lynch and Kathy Arcasian, their involvement and working forward on this. I think this is really going to be successful. I think they have a good program already, but I think we need to enhance it for the students who need these services. And one last comment, with that Committeewoman Dougherty pointed out, we do have a variety of different folks at the Malloy, be it truance, disruptive behavior, and other issues that are in one building. So we really need to take a look at separating some of those types of, types of behaviors, I guess, is the best way to say it. So we're actually putting likes in, in a, in a, in an environment where they are, are tip, are the same, I guess. But I am encouraged, I appreciate the Headmaster, and again, Carrie, Carrie Lynch and Kathy Arcasian for putting the hard work in, and I appreciate the Lowell High School Subcommittee. They had a lot of good dialogue and a lot of good feedback. So I look forward to discussing this again at the next Subcommittee meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Le, Mr. Leary?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to add to what Committee, Committeeman Larry said, that during the discussion, we had taken a look at the variety of needs in one building, whether it's discipline, emotional, trauma. So what we had asked also is for the high school to look at a two-year plan for the future, because if we do build these two new schools in Lowell, we're going to free up some other buildings. And whether or not they get turned back to the city or not, we'll, most likely, we're going to have some extra staff. And different ideas are going to come out. Maybe one idea that the Sacred Heart School is not being used, that might be something that, if it was feasible, could be rented, and a program could be run out of that. So the high school, hopefully, they're going to take a, a good look at this, so they're going to forecast for the future for their needs, and we can work together. And as soon as these new schools are built, we tie up, we free up some staff and buildings. We'll have better alternatives for our students, because we do have one of the largest high schools in the Commonwealth, and the high school has been doing a lot of work, looking at other communities with their, what they do for their, their alternative schools. So I commend them on their work, and hopefully, we'll come up with some good solutions. Thank you.
Thanks. Just to point out, I know the Sa, former Sacred Heart School is used as a parish center for Holy Family Parish, so there are people there that might take exception to the fact that it's no longer being used.
We can work with them. They'll, they'll, they won't mind.
Okay. Okay. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report's accepted.
Okay.
Ms. Dougherty?
The next item was, we talked about scheduling improvements. As my colleagues know, and I'm sure many parents out there know, we had a difficult transition this year with the new X2 database system in terms of getting high school schedules in place in time for the beginning of the school year. So the high school's taking a jump on getting that together for next year, that it doesn't happen again. And we got a report from the Coordinator for Student Services, Carrie Lynch, about how the high school's working very closely with eighth grade guidance counselors to get a, a jump on the scheduling for next year's freshman class. We also talked about making sure that we identify those eighth graders who are going to need additional support in reading, such as the Read 180 program, get a handle on that upfront, so we know what to expect in the fall. And we discussed doing early recruitment for summer school, so that we have appropriate numbers of staff hired to match the student load. And so it was really just kind of an update of the efforts in place to make sure that we do a better job with scheduling in the fall. And the motion is to recommend the committee as a whole accept this report as a report of progress.
Okay. What, I think most of these are reports of progress, so why don't you just continue?
Okay, just keep going, okay. We talked about the Freshman Academy Reading Intervention Program that I just mentioned, the Read 180, and the initial results are very encouraging. We had, most students made gains that are twice the average of what a student would make in a year's worth of learning in a matter of four months. The average point gain would be, say, 25 to 50 points in a year, and our students in four months showed 85-point gain. So that was very encouraging, that the program was working for these students. We also discussed the fact that even with large gains in their reading, they were still going to be somewhat behind as they started 10th grade, and what kind of supports would be in place for them next year. We asked those questions. The high school talked about strategies to help 10th-grade teachers continue to provide additional supports to these students. And as I mentioned earlier, we're also looking at who's going to be coming up in the fall. The other issue we discussed was the discipline procedures at the high school. The Headmaster pointed out that the goal is to have more consistency across houses and better communication among the whole high school regarding students and student behavior. And so we talked about they having weekly meetings with housemasters and Lowell administrators, and to really, you know, keep the focus on having a safe and respectful climate at the high school. In particular, we discussed the Freshman Academy, that expectations for student behavior has really increased at the Freshman Academy, that we've had a much stronger year there this year than last year, and that we would continue to like updates regarding the progress. And in particular, we had, I think it was my colleague, Mr. Leary, who said if we could get more information in terms of the, the specific resolution of incidents that have been brought to our attention, like we might hear about an incident that happened at the high school, or really anywhere in the district, I think, but we don't hear the resolution of it, we don't find out what happened afterwards, so there was that request. The other update was about the smaller learning community grant position. Headmaster Samaris explained the position was posted twice, but they did not feel they got the type of candidate they were really looking for, so he's suggesting that it would be better to post the position again in late spring, when there might be more opportunity for a larger pool of candidates. Dr. Jack explained the plan to go forward even without the position being filled yet in terms of looking at creating clusters in Grade 10, similar to what we're doing at the Freshman Academy, where we have smaller communities of students who really get to know their teachers and really, you know, develop a more personal approach. We discussed some other things, the Saturday buyback program, but we did not go into detail on that, because that was a, a motion by my colleague, Mr. McHugh, and we thought we'd save that for another high school Subcommittee meeting, perhaps when we could attend. I think that would be it, so I guess the motion to recommend to the committee as a whole accept this report as a report of progress.
Why don't we take, consider the matter of the delay in the position separately?
Okay.
Okay, so it's a motion to adopt the recommendation of the Subcommittee by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary? I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Leary?
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Seven aces approved.
And motion by Ms. Fattacante, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin?
I just wanted to make a, a quick comment. I know we went over a lot of material at that meeting, but I, I did kind of want to cycle back a little bit to the Read 180 program that we have in place. To hear about the, the significant success of this program in working with our students who have, who have fallen behind for whatever reason, who have additional challenges to their, to achieving literacy, I am really very heartened and very pleased to see these kinds of results for a very specific program that's targeted towards a very, again, a very specific population within our, within our school district. One thing that I, I really wanted to stress is, this really is one of those situations where, you know, the accountability that we hold our, our administrators to, our teachers to, our students to, this is one of the ways in which the school, the school committee holds itself accountable, where we are, you know, looking for hardcore data, data to make our decisions based on. And to see this kind of progress and this kind of achievement and improvement in, in literacy levels based on this specific program, I mean, this is exactly the kind of information I think we need to make well-informed decisions, and I think it's incumbent upon the committee and certainly the administration to continue to make sure that this is the kind of information that we're given and that we require as we, as we make our decisions in the future. So just, I mean, I, I think it's really exciting to have a program in place right now that really is achieving what we need it to do and what our students require of us. And I think that, again, to have this kind of information helps us all to do a better job at, at what is certainly a very important task. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Next report is of the Transportation Subcommittee, report and approval of the minutes of February 5th. Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. We had a meeting to discuss the upcoming transportation bid that we're going to be looking at here in, at the school department. Jackie Dougherty and myself were at the meeting along with other school committee members present, Mr. Leary, Mr. Leary, and Mr. McHugh, and Mr. Lang from, and Mr. Dakota from School Department Personnel. What we looked at was the preference of a three versus four and five-year contract. And the option that we came up with was on a motion by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by myself, that we would advertise for a three-year contract with options to go to the fourth year and to the fifth year. And Mr. Lang and Mr. Dakota spoke to us, clearly that would be the most advantageous for us as we embark on another, on another long-term contract. Some of the other things that I think that are important that I just want to quickly raise, there, late-arriving buses, item number three, reduced to 15 minutes to 30 minutes. And if the buses arrive late, there will be an increased payment to the school department. The other issue that we had a lot of discussion about was regarding the garaging of our school buses. New information from the Inspector General's Office say that instead of having a city requirement, you must instead have a mileage requirement, which gives companies more options about where they're going to garage their buses. And this committee has worked diligently, along with Mr. Dakota, and one of the things that we've been able to do is decrease our fleet from 65 to 53. So we're going to be looking at a bid of 53 buses. And the successful bidder, we're looking at the successful bidder to provide some GPS monitoring, so that we know where a bus is, we know if it's off route, we know if it's going to be late. Not specific and in-depth, but some very simple GPS monitoring that will allow us to, I don't, I don't want to be tracking drivers, but clearly, this is a safety issue. It is a safety issue. Somebody boards a bus, doesn't allow a driver to communicate, and all of a sudden, we're able to tell that that bus is off route. So this is clearly a safety issue. And we're going to be looking at the new bidder to phase in this GPS system. And we're also going to be looking at the new bidder to phase in the bus radio installation. And the new bidder will also be phasing in a digital camera system. Right now, we are, we currently have an analog system. The analog system doesn't record the first three seats in the bus, but a, but a, but a new upgrade in that, in that, in that digital camera system would in fact allow the driver to have, would allow everybody to have far more access to viewing every youngster on the bus. So there's no indication of, well, if it was, was little Johnny in seats one through three, when he didn't board the bus today, I, I can only see seats four through, you know, 18, and that eliminates that problem. So there was a motion by Jackie Dougherty, seconded by myself, to accept the recommended changes as outlined and advertise for a three-year contract with a four and five-year option at the sole discretion of the Lowell Public Schools. The committee would need to vote on that motion, Your Honor, because we need to put this contract out to bid.
All right. So moved by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Mr. Leary?
Okay. I, could I ask a question to Mr. Lang? What, what's the rationale for the three-year versus five-year? If I, if I were going to get a five-year contract, wouldn't I be likely to bid lower?
The, from looking at the different trends in some of the transportation bids, most of the transportation companies, if they do see an optional fourth or fifth year, will actually bid it as a five-year contract, because they can spread, they'll assume if they provide good service for the first three years, and the price was competitive for the fourth and fifth year, that they'd be awarded the fourth and fifth years of the contract. But the school committee in Lowell has always only had a, stand a three-year contract. I think it provides us a certain level, level of protection, that this is a, a bid contract. We do need to go with the lowest bidder, and it isn't tying their hands into a five-year bid. And I think by having that three-year guarantee, that they're going to have to provide very good service for those three years to win years four and five is, is advantageous to the committee. committee.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. McHugh.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fatakante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay. The next report is on the Joint Safety and Discipline Subcommittee Meeting of February 5th. Mr. McHugh's Chair of Discipline, Ms. Fatakante's Chair of Safety, who wants to?
I'll, I'll start off, Your Honor. Thank you. The members present for the Safety Subcommittee, myself and Jackie Dougherty, members for the Discipline Alternative School Subcommittee, Mr. McHugh, who is the chairperson, myself and John Leahy, also Mr. Leary, who did not have to be there that evening, was there for both subcommittee meetings. We were privileged to have the staff from several of our schools, interim assistant superintendent, Anne Murphy, Mary Ann Bond, principal of the Varnum School, Alish Conradin, principal of the Butler, Marielle S. Foley, assistant principal of the Butler, Liam Skinner, principal of the Daily, Robert Doyle, assistant principal of the Daily. And it was important to have them there because each, each group of people spoke to the committee about different issues that were presented that night at the table. So the first issue we were talking about was the status of alternative schools. We needed an additional teacher for the aid program. I'm going to hit the highlights that we really discussed that night. That person has not been hired due to a change in some student referrals. The, the position will be filled as warranted. Currently, Your Honor, and to my colleagues, there is no, there is not a need to, to fill that position yet. The number of slots given to each school can be increased with what we learned were superintendent slots, or we also learned that schools who need another slot can call a partner school and say, look, I see that you're not using all of your slots, so this particular alternative school, can I borrow a slot? And that happens all the time, and it's, it's acceptable for giving and receiving schools. We're also, one of the major topics of discussion that night was ways to increase the eighth-grade repeater program. That is a fairly successful program for us. It could be a lot more successful if we had maybe some additional resources in the program, so we're going to look at what additional resources we could provide to that program. The last thing on the alternative schools, we're going to look at some data to determine the success rate of the program. It's something that we did not have in front of us the other night. I mean, we clearly know that there are successes because we recognize that youngsters go from alternative school programs and they come back to regular ed programs, and they are successful students. So we clearly know that. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to, we'd like to, you know, pat the people on the back who are actually creating successes for those, for those youngsters. So there was a motion by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to recommend to the, to the committee as a whole to accept the report as a report of progress, and to invite the coordinator of the McHugh Alternative Program to the next subcommittee meeting. The, the discipline policy, Your Honor, and to the committee, that was a, that there was a lot of discussion about the discipline policy. We were provided with, with copies of our discipline policy, and here's what we discussed. We discussed that while there are discipline policies on paper, that different schools, that some schools adhere to the discipline policy very strictly, while clearly we have experienced, others do not. And we need to, we need to make sure there is 100% adherence throughout the system with our discipline policies. So the discussion, that all principals described similar responses and consequences to the conduct violated, violations presented, but again, members of the committee who were there each had a story about, well, remember when this policy was not performed to the point where it should have been. And that was, that was a, that was a bone of contention, I think, with committee members. Concern was expressed that while principals knew the discipline policy, not all were consistently following it. The other, the other issue, Your Honor, that we need to, probably the biggest issue, is that we really need to look at our discipline policies. They need to be restructured. We have changed some policies over the past several years. One of the issues in specific is the dress code. Our current policy currently still reflects the fact that we are in it, that we have a dress code. So we're, we're probably going to need to hire a consultant or have somebody within the school department, look at the, the policies that we are, that we are creating now through motions, and compare that to the policies that we currently have on the books, because some of them are not consistent with each other. I know, and I see Ms. Martin shaking her head. It's a huge job, because we, we pass policies every month, and some of those do contain disciplinary matters. That's a huge impact for us. And our policy manual truly needs to be updated. So the, so we're looking at updating the student code of conduct to, to actually, which needs to also be aligned with the X2 student database. Okay? Motion by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to recommend to the committee as a whole to accept the report as a report of progress. The, the next issue was an issue that was, I believe, raised by Ms. Dougherty, and it went to this subcommittee. It was regarding the bullying and harassment policy. It was very good to have people sitting at the table telling us exactly what they do in their school for an anti-bullying policy. The Daily School has a very aggressive policy where their health teachers, once a month, have taken on the task of, of talking about bullying. They have, they have boxes all over the school in places that are not visible by other people where students can drop a note in the box and say, yeah, I was bullied on this particular day and I'm afraid to talk about it. And those are looked at on a daily basis. The vice principal at the Daily School approaches those students on a daily basis, and, and those, and those issues are tackled on a daily basis. So we, we also looked at violence prevention and social skills programs funded through Safe &amp; Drug School Grants. Mary Ann Bond, principal at the Varnum, she presented a, a, a program appropriate to her grade level. Rob Doyle at the Daily, again, he talked about this anti-bullying program which they have at the Daily School, and, and it seems to be very successful. We also asked, the committee members who were there also asked for information at the end of this school year, how are you going to measure whether students are not, would the students feel safe? And, and they, they actually have a method in place that they've already planned on using to, to, to take that measurement, to figure out how that's, how they're going to do that. The motion regarding that, Your Honor, was Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. McHugh, to recommend to the committee as a whole, again, to accept that as a report of progress. Big bone of contention of the night was a cell phone policy.
Okay. I'm just hitting the highlights of the report.
Okay. Cell phone policy. In response to Mr. Leahy's request to review the cell phone policy, the K-8 student conduct policy, the LHS Code of Conduct policy, principals who were at the table vehemently opposed changing our cell phone policy. And here's what they, and some of the examples they presented were pretty hideous. I don't know if my colleague, Mr. McHugh, okay, I don't want to raise them either. But here's what they did say, that cell phone use in school, especially the opportunity for youngsters to take photos and to take streaming video, may in fact create a legal problem for us if we were to allow cell phones to be used in schools. And that there have been, in several schools across the city, several incidents that have in fact occurred on those lines, which threw you, Your Honor, to my colleagues, when we heard about them, I think we were all pretty aghast. I mean, it, I mean, long, long past is the day where you passed a note in class. And so we were, we heard from the principals and the vice principals, they were very adamant. The discussion included text messaging during class, class disruption by phones vibrating with incoming calls and text messages, the use of the phone to call home to derail a disciplinary proceeding. Hey, Mom, come get me out of class because I'm going to be getting in trouble in an hour. And Mom doesn't know this. Mom just says, hey, I'm picking my, picking little Johnny up and, and come to find out little Johnny has texted or called his mother during the school day. Safety concerns, this was the other, this was the other issue, safety concerns during a school lockdown. School goes into lockdown. Every kid who's got a cell phone calls and says, Mom, the school's in lockdown. Every parent gets in their car and now drives to the school. That creates a huge safety issue for law enforcement, safety personnel who are trying to come to the scene, and parents who are clearly upset. And it, it now also jams frequencies for emergency personnel to use their safety equipment. Unappropriate use of photos taken of students then placed on MySpace.com or AIM. Pictures used on MySpace to intimidate and threaten students that were taken by phones during the school day. And the liability issue if the phone is confiscated, stolen, lost, or damaged, because that has happened too. Kids take their phone, they put it in their locker, kid didn't lock his locker, phone gets stolen. And, and, and who, who, who is the person responsible for that? So it was a motion by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to recommend to the committee as a whole to keep the current policy which prohibits cell phones in the schools. That was, that was a huge issue for us the other night.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to comment on that particular issue and actually two other points about the meeting. I also want to commend the principals for being there. They stayed till almost 10 o'clock at night on a school night, and I know that's a big deal, everybody's get up at the crack of dawn. In terms of the cell phone issue, I felt any new policy that we would develop would not in any way allow cell phone usage in school, and that many of the misuses and abuses that they talked about were just that, kids using phones in school when they weren't supposed to be. My idea, which I supported Mr. Leahy's motion to review the policy, was to look at allowing students to have cell phones with them, not on at all during the school day. And it would follow, in fact, maybe even be more severe than the current policy. If you find a student using a phone on school grounds during the school day, you take the phone and keep it for the rest of the year or whatever, you know, the rest of the week, your parent has to come in and have a meeting, whatever. But my issue about safety is our middle school kids walking home. You know, we've got a lot of kids walking the streets of Lowell. I know that the recent update I have was we have 56 Level 3, registered Level 3 sex offenders, however you say it, living in the city. I've got one living right next door to me, and I'm concerned as a parent about my children walking home. And it doesn't matter to me if, we've got kids walking a mile and a half or more that don't meet the bus, you know, schedule, and it doesn't matter to me because I wouldn't make that mile and a half cutoff anyway. My kids only walk a mile. But the idea of allowing children to be safe on our streets by carrying phones, very clearly saying you cannot have the phone on during the school day. I understand, and I really, you know, empathize with the principals frustration with the difficulty they've had in maintaining control about cell phone usage in the schools, when our policy is no cell phones in the school. That's our current policy, because the reality is, kids are bringing phones to school. That's the reality of the world we live in. And I think it puts parents in a difficult position of having to, you know, disobey a rule and publicly saying to their child, this is a rule we're not going to obey because I'm concerned about your safety. And that was an issue that I had brought up, and I know I'm not in the majority on this, but I just felt like I needed to say this point of view. I think the committee, the subcommittee that met that night did agree, you know, and the administrators who were there, you know, we should look at this again, maybe next year or whatever, but it is, I think, a valid concern that parents have in terms of the safety of their kids, you know, and especially in the winter when it gets dark earlier, you have kids after school, staying after school for programs. I mean, I'm fortunate I can pick up my children if they stay till quarter or five at an after school program, but many of our parents might not have that luxury. So I just wanted to say, in terms of the cell phone policy, I understand it to be a, really a surveillance issue, and I know it's a pain in the neck for our administrators and our teachers, but they're dealing with it anyway. They're dealing with it anyway. Kids are bringing phones to school as their horror stories, you know, told us that it is happening. And this would just be a way to say, you are allowed to have a phone on you, you cannot have it on, on school property during the school day, but it, it won't pass tonight, so I won't belabor it. I just want to make that point. The other two things that I wanted to mention was regarding the alternative schools. One thing that really struck me was, it, I had always thought it was about the availability of slots, that that was a big problem, and it really didn't seem like that was it, at least from the K-8 perspective, that it's not so much that we don't have the space for these children that need alternative programs, but the, again, maybe looking at the flexibility of the programs, like for the eighth-grade repeaters, as Ms. Fatakante mentioned, to perhaps be able to take more, especially in the beginning of the semester, when we don't have a lot of seventh grade and sixth grade kids needing alternative programs. They come in later, we don't really identify them until they start to really act out, that we could use our staffing a little bit better to get, the idea with the eighth-grade repeater program is that after the first semester, they have a successful first semester and they go right to the high school and start their freshman year. So that was good to hear that, that it wasn't a slot issue. And also that we need to have more flexibility at our middle school program, the Cardinal O'Connell program. One thing that jumped out at me in terms of the time allotment, it's a short-term program, but sometimes kids need to be there a little longer than, what is it, 45 to 90 days, I think. And to have some flexibility that on a needs basis, we are able to keep kids longer and really look at some flexibility for that program. And the last thing is, with the bullying and harassment policy, one thing I was really happy to hear about is this, and I know it's in the process of being developed, but thus, this idea of a rubrics that would be right in our handbook that really discusses a continuation of consequences, especially for repeat bullies, because this is what I keep hearing from parents. Their frustration, one, that they know that the same boy who's picking on this, their son this week, was picking on somebody else's son two weeks ago. And the second frustration with that is, the school is required by privacy laws to not reveal to parents, you know, of victims, well, this is what happened to that bully. But if we had a very clear rubrics, which they are now developing, that spelled, that a principal could say to a parent, look, I can't tell you specifically what's happening in this case, but I can refer you to our handbook and tell you that we are very clearly following the policy that the district has set out, to really, you know, provide consequences and ultimately help for bullies, because we know that, you know, bullies who don't get helped grow up to end up in jail. I mean, I think that's what the statistics show. So I, I thought it was a very good meeting. I appreciate all the work, and again, I appreciate the principals coming out. I respectfully disagree with the cell phone issue, but on that, I'll end. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of quick comments. I lost my spot here, but on one of the issues that dealt with, with the discipline problem, we also had a motion on there by me to look at safety programs, any grants, any money that was available to, for our schools for safety issues as far as locks on doors, cameras, what have you, police, resource officers. So out of that discussion, we ended up talking about some of the doors on our schools, and we never really made a formal motion, but we knew, and Mr. Lang had worked on this today, that there's a problem at the Daily School for their doors. And the doors have been fixed numerous times and they just don't lock. So I would almost like to take a motion tonight to instruct us to have Mr. Lang instruct, Mr. Curley, our operations manager, which he's already doing anyways, but just so it's on the record, that we want all the doors to be checked on the schools, make sure they're properly functioning, and if they're not, then we need to replace them or deal with them. Because we really can't have any of the doors not working, and sometimes we say, you know, they don't work because of the humidity or the cold weather, but we live in New England, so the doors need to work and they need to lock properly. So I don't know if I can, because I'm on the discipline, but not the safety committee, but we need to make a motion for?
Could I add to that?
Mr. McHugh?
Could I just also make an amendment to that? I think we can, because it was discussed under the safety and security through that process, but I'd like to add that we, we receive a list by school of any doors, and then that list be forwarded to the city to have them be addressed, that we will have a, a record of what was submitted, if any problems as the committee here, and then we could kind of follow that through the process. And, you know, once it gets to the city, you know, maybe they can kind of, I prioritize and identify a way to get these done.
Right. Because I know we care, but, but it's really got to be immediately dealt with. I mean, we can't say we don't have the money for it, or we, I mean, we have to fix the doors and make sure they're working, so.
I agree.
I'd like to make that motion.
A second. And in furtherance of that, Your Honor, the, the issue is so serious at the Daily that youngsters are...
are opening the door at night and skateboarding down the hallway, because they know that the door does not work. They know that the lock does not work. And that is a huge problem. So, and you know, the city comes up, fixes it for a couple of days, it's fine, and then after that, it does not work again. And unfortunately, we're only tenants, we're not owners, so we don't have the opportunity to do that kind of maintenance. And that is a serious safety concern, and it's a serious theft concern, it's a serious some kid breaks his leg concern. So, I hate to pile all this on you, but it is a huge issue that the city is going to have to work with us to deal with.
All right. So that's a motion by Mr. Leahy to come up with the door list and for repair action, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion's approved. Mr. Leary, head his hands up here.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. First, I want to, a lot of the motions that were on the safety, discipline, alternative school meeting were my motions. And I want to thank personally Ann Murphy, our interim assistant superintendent, for putting this very lengthy and very full report. And I appreciate the fact that I not only reviewed each of the discipline and safety procedures, but also recommendations that we need to take a look at as we go forward throughout the remainder of the year. So I think this is a high-valued report. I think some of the recommendations are simply to review and revise the table of major violations, I'm just reading from the list, review the suspended, suspension notification form to align with the major violations, and then really, you know, list the major violations with those in the X2 student database. I'm not going to read them all, but there's a lengthy recommendation list, which I appreciate the thorough review. I also want to commend Liam Skinner and his assistant principal, Robert Doyle, with some of the creative thinking on how to deal with the bullying issue. In terms, I think, committee woman, Fatacante pointed out that they actually have boxes throughout the school that are anonymous. You can have anonymous complaints whether or not you're being bullied or other folks are being bullied. And I think the follow-up, I think this was implemented in November, and the follow-up so far has been pretty positive. And I hope to look forward for Principal Skinner to provide this information in terms of how successful this was. And if it's something that's successful, we can implement or replicate throughout the other middle schools and maybe even the elementary schools. I think all in all, it was a lengthy meeting. I don't want to go through a lot of what committee woman Fatacante stated, it was a lot of positive steps we're going to be taking in the near future, and I look forward to the next subcommittee meeting, and talking about this on the floor as well in the future.
Just briefly, I know Ms. Doherty spoke regarding the cellphone policy, and I think we just need to be clear to folks at home that there is a policy in place that says no cellphones in school. I have to say, I think it's very clear, and you want it clear. I don't want the gray issue to work its way in. And it says in the policy, through the handbooks at the elementary, middle school, and the high school, it's not even just that, it's CD players, I mean, we're talking video games, Walkmans and iPods, they're not allowed. I don't know if everyone knows that, but they're not allowed, and they will be confiscated, and the parent's going to have to come in and get them. And I think, as Ms. Fatacante stated, all those issues, why, were discussed. If it becomes an issue of telling the child, well, you can bring it, but you got to shut it off, and honestly, we know that's somewhat happening, the issue becomes, as all the principals clearly stated, the kids are so fast at text messaging in class. Now, honestly, let's think about that. If you're a student and you're taking an exam, and you could sit there with this on your lap, and you could text message someone else with questions, they could probably text message answers back to you. We don't need that to be happening. So I think there's a lot of other issues why you don't want cellphones. Never mind, unfortunately, some of the stories we heard from real-life situations that's going on, what children are doing with these, with the phones, now that they can take pictures, and some of them can take videos, and some of them can even record, you know, recordings of voices, and reutilizing those and putting them in inappropriate spots. That is the liability issue. I think one of them, one of the other stories we heard is a student went into the bathroom, called their parents, said, I don't feel good, could you come and get me? And then when the parent showed up, they're saying, why are you here? Oh, I'm dismissing my child. They pushed the parent to say, well, the nurse, the child hasn't been to the nurse or anything. He said, oh, my child called me with his cellphone. So, I mean, it's really, there's a lot of issues here with these cellphones that, I have to say, we have a policy, you know, we got to keep it in place. I think we heard loud and clear from all the principals that were there that, don't change it. It's difficult, as it is right now, to manage this on a day-to-day basis. And it's very clear, if they catch one, they grab it, and the parent has to come in and get it. And I think that's the right thing to do. And it's a distraction for the child, because we heard the other parent that their son got a brand-new cellphone for Christmas, and two weeks later in school, and it disappeared. And the parent's coming down saying, who's paying for that cellphone? Well, they said, the policy says no cellphone. So, that takes care of it. And I think that's what it's about. And parents need to understand that. I understand the concern about a child walking home or after school. I mean, there's no easy solution for that. I mean, there really isn't. But I think if you allow students to bring them, you're going to have the constant, I forgot to turn it off. And I think that even happens now, where kids, that's why they're catching them, because the kids forgot to put it on vibrate, or it's just ringing, and they walk over and just take it. So I think we have something in place to deal with this situation. I really believe we need to follow the policy, especially when our principals are telling us they want it to stay the way it's set up, makes their job a little bit easier, it's a difficult job to try to manage this now. I don't want to make it any more difficult for them. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further? Motion to accept the report by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. All right. The next report is the Mayor's Task Force on Desegregation. Any objection from me, given the report from here? This meeting was earlier this evening, as I think most of the committee members know. I'm required by the terms of the consent decree, which is not close yet to 20 years, not quite 20 years old, but getting close, to have this task force meet periodically. We had the October enrollment report given to us some weeks ago. I believe a packet, a copy was made available to everybody in the last packet two weeks ago. Just some brief highlights of what's in the report. We are facing declining enrollment. If you start in, say, year 2001 and look at five-year trends, enrollment in the system is down about 15%, but that is better than other schools, non-public schools in Lowell, which are down 24%, 25%. Really, it's an issue of reducing population among school-aged children. We're in some peak years, those kids are in high school now, and enrollment is starting to decline slightly. I should point out, that's not really much of an issue with respect to the school projects that are under consideration, because those are not meant for increasing enrollment there to replace substandard facilities. As far as languages, I think most committee members would not be surprised to hear this, but other people in the public would. We have over 30 languages, over 35 languages spoken in the Lowell public schools. The main ones, English, 58%, Kamai, 20%, Spanish, 12%, Portuguese, 4%, and other languages from there. 58% of the children are minority, 42% are non-minority. Nearly half the students are identified as first language, not English. And of those, 31% are identified as English language learners, so they're limited English proficient. Certainly, that presents a number of challenges to the school system. And I would also point out, I was surprised to see, of the 4,000 or so English language learners, less than 1,000 are born outside the United States. Most of them are all born in this country. And so, but those are some of the challenges the system faces. We have 61% of the children eligible for free and reduced lunch. And so, I think the purpose of the report is to review it, to see how we're meeting our goals, compliance with the consent decree and the desegregation order. We are in substantial compliance in most schools, and there are some challenges in some, but the new policies that the administration has put in place in the last year is working to correct those imbalances. So, that's really the report, and I know there is a written report that documents many of the statistical trends further. And if there are any questions, I, or the superintendent, be happy to answer them. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. One reason why this was brought up also was that I'd like to see us try to even the numbers out in the middle school. Remember, we brought that up when we got this report initially? So, and I understand that was brought up at the meeting, but I think that'd be one of our goals, too, to even out the middle schools. Probably the Daly is the most populated, down to the Robinson, which may have the smallest number. So, that should be a priority to take a look at, too. And they're doing such great things at the Robinson now. I mean, really isn't any issue with what type of education you're going to get at that school. So, but it's a great report, and it has a lot of information, and it really opens your eyes up to what our teachers face every day in the schools. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Martin?
Just a quick question, just so I'm understanding. You're talking about the classroom size, so that it's even across the district at the middle school level?
School numbers. Like the Daly School has 700 kids, and the, and the...
Robinson.
Robinson has 546 students. So if there are more neighborhood kids that could go to the Robinson, they should be going to the Robinson versus another school in their zone. The only thing we don't have here maybe is the capacity of the schools, but I'm sure that if we could, if we could even the numbers off, I'm sure it would benefit the schools.
I just wanted to...
Sure.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Part of it is to the, trying to meet the request of parents, and roughly 75% of the parents get the first choice of the school. Dr. Che is going to get some additional data on that, but that was her best estimate. So that's a positive as well. So, motion to accept the report by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. And the next subcommittee report is a report of the finance subcommittee meeting of this evening by Mr. McHugh.
The finance subcommittee met tonight. President, along with myself, was, school committee members, Jim Leary and John Leahy and Mr. Lang, presented us with the FY07 second quarter financial report update. We are on track financially, exactly where we need to be, within a percent or two of our, you know, budget appropriated versus expended. So we just had a very brief discussion. Normally, on the next third quarter report, we get into more in-depth as far as a true analysis, where we're going to be with our budget as we start to prepare to close down and see where our accounts are, you know, if we're falling behind. But as of right now, it looks like across the board, we're right where we need to be. So that was a good sign, and we'll have a better picture of, as we get through, like, the utilities, as we get through these next two months with our, probably the coldest months, and we really get to see where those bills tend to go up or down based on the needs. So, next report coming back will be a little more in-depth, I think, as far as exactly where we start to trend on our expenditures. Also, we talked about, we had a request for two special education, new positions, teaching positions, one at the Riley, one at the Pawtucketville. Since they haven't even been discussed by the special education subcommittee, there was a motion by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy, that we refer this item to the special education subcommittee, to have them review it first, to see, look at the staffing needs, and then they could send it back to the finance subcommittee for funding if so desired by that committee. So at that point, that was really a motion that was taken. So we really didn't get into, we didn't have any information other than there's a request to look at that. So we felt it would be better to go through the special education subcommittee first and have them review that proposal. So if we could move on that, those were the two items we talked about tonight, and other than that, a report of progress.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Yes, through, Your Honor. I just wanted to mention that the special ed subcommittee is meeting on Monday, and it would be great if you, you know, if we could get the material by then, we could look at it then and really make a quick decision on this, you know, a recommendation.
And you could try and write around back to us, it'd be great.
Right. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. McHugh, could you state the motion again?
The motion was to refer that item to the special education subcommittee, then they can report back to the finance subcommittee on their findings.
Okay. So moved by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, that matter is referred to the special education subcommittee.
And we received some information on, from Ms. Martin, on a motion on a predium report. I asked, the committee asked that that just be forwarded on the off-week packet to all committee members, because it was just a follow-up to a motion. So there really wasn't, we didn't have any sense of any action to take on it other than a report. So we accept it as a report of progress and ask it to be forwarded to the committee as a whole.
Okay. Motion to accept the balance of the report as a report of progress by Mr. McHugh, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. On reports of the superintendent, first for Lowell High School graduation, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you. You have a report, it's on your desk, the most current version of it. It's the one that has the color pie chart on the front page. The one you received in your packets inadvertently lacked the labels in the red and blue parts of the graph, so it was hard, very hard to interpret without the labels. Just a couple of comments on this report. The Department of Education released a report last week, it was the first-ever report from the Commonwealth, to look at a particular class of students across all of the Commonwealth, the class of 2006. Looked, it took a look at all the youngsters who four years earlier on October 1st were enrolled in, as freshmen, in a high school in Massachusetts. And then it's looking four years later, if they were all on course graduating four years later, they would have been graduating in the class of 2006. So the state looked at that across for every high school and statewide, and had some very, I think, interesting findings, and when looking at Lowell in comparison to that, there's one of those very good news and also challenging news behind it. So in the report that you have prepared by Paul Schlichtman, our coordinator of research, testing, and assessment, on the first page, this points out what may be obvious, but it's always good to have numbers behind it. Three out of four members of the class of 2006 were enrolled in Lowell, at Lowell High School for four consecutive years. So they entered in October 1 of 2002, and they, and they were enrolled for four straight years. One out of four arrived after October 1 of 2002. So they were what then subsequently in the report are described as the transient students, students who weren't here the full four years. On the second page, on the second page of the report, you can see the state, the comparison, the green bar, which is the largest bar on the left, shows that statewide, 80% of the kids that were here four years in a high school in Massachusetts four years ago graduated as the class of 2006. So 80%. Another 7% or so were still enrolled and on course to graduate the next year, to be, to take five years to get through high school. So that's the state picture. Urban districts, the number of, percentage of the class graduating was just over 60% across the state for all urban districts. In Lowell, if you go to the fourth bar over, all of the Lowell youngsters, we were at about 70%. So Lowell High School, in that respect, has outperformed its urban counterparts, which is very, very exciting. And, you know, are getting close to sort of midway between urban and the state as a whole. If you further, as Paul did, break this down, if you look at the students who were transient, who came in after October 1 of '02, you can see they had a much lower graduation rate, below 50%. Youngsters who were here four years, actually at Lowell High School for four years, met the state average of 80% of them graduating in four years on time. So that's, I think that's exciting. The second, the third page points to, points to something I think that's particularly important. If you, if you look at the first, the first chart, the fourth bar in, it shows statewide limited English proficient youngsters, statewide, about 55% of them graduated in four years. And there's a fairly large number in the orange of kids still enrolled, on course to graduate five years later. In Lowell, we actually graduated in four years, almost 55%. Whereas statewide, it's considerably lower. For us, we graduated almost 55%. And almost... Um, and almost another twenty percent are still there at Lowell High School, uh, hopefully on course to graduate perhaps in five years. Uh, so that, uh, so our fairly high limited English proficient, um, population, it, we, we seem to be having, uh, more success than typical in the state in graduating, graduating them in four years, even though it's, that's low compared to other students at the high school. But a fair number is still there, uh, on course to graduate in five years, which is not surprising since a lot of them have to master English, uh, in order to earn, uh, earn all the credits in English, taking courses taught in English. The rest of the, uh, rest of the, uh, report gives you comparisons by different kind, different group, by gender, by, uh, by, by, uh, youngsters eligible for, um, free and reduced lunch and so on. But the consistent pattern through the report is not surprising, but it's useful to know. If you started at Lowell High School four years ago, the chances you're graduating in four years are really quite high. Uh, if you come in, uh, at some point after that, then your chances, uh, decline. It speaks to the issues of needing, uh, uh, newcomer programs at the high school and of, um, of supporting, having programs that are tailored to youngsters who do arrive partway through a semester uh, so that they can get on track quickly. Uh, and it points to the, uh, importance of, of, uh, of, um, of continuing to, uh, work with youngsters, um, to, uh, to, uh, support them to graduate. We're gonna be very interested, um, in the, in the report that will be available next year from the state on the five-year graduation rate. Uh, because particularly for urban districts, a fair number of youngsters are on, probably not intentionally, but they are on the five-year plan as opposed to the four-year plan. And, um, and, uh, so we really wanna see how many youngsters we do pick up uh, who graduate successfully five years out, uh, taking a year longer than, than others. Welcome any questions?
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, just a quick question through you to the superintendent. On pages five and six, and it might be on the other pages too, when you have a graph that says Lowell all and then next to it it says Lowell four years, does all mean K to twelve?
No, all means is, means every youngster who's in the, in the group that the state identified as assigned to Lowell High School. So those are youngsters who were here all four years as well as youngsters who were, who were someplace, someplace, maybe not Lowell High School, on October first, two thousand and two. They were freshmen at some high school somewhere and they came into Lowell High School after that date.
Okay.
So-
So it's less than four?
The all combines the tr- the young, the students who are transients and the students who were here all four years. So that, so that you, so the pattern is consistent through the, through the charts. The lowest graduation rate is for the transient students. The highest is for the youngsters who were here from the start four years ago. And the all logically then is in the middle of those two, cause it includes both those groups.
Motion to accept the report by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leary, Mr. Leary?
Just, just real quick, and I, and I might be confused with something. There was something at the Lowell High School Subcommittee that Wendy Jack, Dr. Jack brought up regarding students that come in during the middle of the year not being able to graduate or collect the credits because they didn't meet our attendance policy. And I, and I knew she said she was working on developing a program where they would get partial credit. I know there's an earned back program on Saturdays, and I'm not sure if, I mean, you look at the numbers, like people that come in transient, I know the language he uses, but basically folks who are not within four years, that, that number's empathetic, I guess, basically. Um, we have to do something like now to help put an impact to it. I mean, it basically, I mean, I, I guess that's one program that she suggested, I mean, I, I think that would be, I, it seems that that might be helpful in line with reducing some of these numbers, is that something you're working on with her, are you cognizant of what she's doing?
It's, it's, it's directly on point, uh, Mr. Le- Leary to this, the, the, as, uh, one out of four students who, who should have graduated if they were on four, on track for four years, uh, should have graduated in two thousand and six, uh, was, were youngsters who ca- who came in after the start of their freshman year. And every year, the high school has a number of youngsters who enter freshman year, sophomore year, junior, even senior year, who come in after the start of the school year. If it's deep enough into the school, into the semester, they, it's very hard for them to get credit under our policy for any of the coursework they take. So what the high school's looking at, uh, so that they're in effect auditing the courses in their first semester here. So what we're looking at is, is the developing a, a more self-paced instruction model for kids that come in mid, mid semester, so they can pick up partial credit. And that should help them get onto the four-year plan as opposed to the five-year or six-year plan, because they can be picking up credits from the moment they arrive.
Right, and I think it's a difference from someone, say, coming from nowhere with not, with a track record from other schools, so you're, we're talking about, say someone's coming from, I don't know, upstate New York, transferring because their parents located, relocated at Lowell. They're not being, okay, good, I, I, I just wanna make sure, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Uh, just one quick question. Looking at page three, the comparison to our, the statewide outcomes and the all Lowell student outcomes. I'm curious, and this may only be, you may only be able to give me kind of an anecdotal answer, but the difference between, um, the favorable outcomes for special ed students statewide is significantly higher than for, uh, for the city of Lowell. And, and it seems to be the only place where that is. And I'm curious if there's a, if there's some, again, some population difference that I'm not seeing, or if this is just an indicator that we need to be paying closer attention to this subgroup?
Uh, I think that, I think that, um, uh, both issues apply. Um, I, I think the, the honest answer is both, that we need to, we need to really look very closely at, uh, at our programming for youngsters with special needs at the high school. That said, um, we have a s- a fairly large percentage of youngsters, uh, with special needs at the high school who will, who, who the design from when they arrived as freshmen is that they'll be there longer than four years. And so those are youngsters you're not gonna see, that's why you see, um, a large orange band. Those are youngsters, um, some of whom will be there until they're twenty-two. Our high school, um, you know, our high school has a, has, has a number of, um, services and programs for youngsters with really significant special needs. Um, and youngsters for whom, um, for whom, uh, more than the four-year plan is, is logical. Um, but I think that it, this is an issue that I know that, uh, Assistant Superintendent Murphy uh, and the staff at the high school want to, um, look closely at and to really analyze, um, to take a look at, are there, are there, uh, ways that we can be doing things differently uh, that will, uh, bring our numbers more in line with the state?
Mainly cause I, I mean, I just think that it's a, it's a population that it certainly marked the difference between statewide and Lowell, and I, I can't, you know, recognizing that there, we have, you know, students who are at the high school who are, you know, we're planning on having there for five, six, five to six years, absolutely. But that has to happen statewide, I mean, that's not unique to us. So it is something I think that we'll need to pay particular attention to as we're having our special ed meeting and everything. Um, cause this does jump out at me as an area that we're gonna need to at least get into the data to see what, what's making it different and what's causing that anomaly.
Thanks. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Um, on the first page, uh, to the superintendent, I just had a question. The eight hundred and seventy-one students, where did they come up with that number? What, what does that represent?
Uh, they are, um, they are, they are six hundred and thirty-four students who were freshmen at Lowell High School on October first of two thousand and two. They had entered as freshmen, there was, they were in their first year at Lowell High School, uh, on October first, two thousand and two. So they, they would be expected typically to graduate four years later, be members of the class of two thousand and six. The other two hundred and thirty-seven were students who were in some high school somewhere as first-year freshmen, October first, two thousand and two, wound up in Lowell after that time at Lowell High School. And so they're counted, so you, those two groups together. So that's, that, that group of two hundred and thirty-seven are what are described here as the transient students. And the six hundred and thirty-four are the, the Lowell four-year students, the students who were here for all four years.
Okay, I just, I thought our numbers were higher than that, but they generally higher now, but maybe back then they were lower? I thought generally we always had like a thousand students come in, that's why I was a little puzzled.
I think you're saying you're talking about two thou- the, the class of two thousand and two had two hundred and thirty-seven students alone, not two thousand and three or two thousand and four.
Right.
Correct. So it's one year you had two hundred, out of that one class, you had two hundred and thirty-seven students transient into Lowell High School, of which only twenty-seven percent graduated?
No, uh, no, I'm sorry, that's not what that means.
Twenty-seven percent of the class was transient students.
Twenty-seven percent of the, one out of, twenty-seven percent, one out of four of that, that cohort are, are youngsters who were not at Lowell High School for four consecutive years.
But these are the state numbers, don't we generally have a higher incoming?
Uh, well, two things are going on, one is our freshman numbers include youngsters who were, who were repeating freshman year. So when we report initial numbers to the state, when we report our freshman enrollment for October first of any given year, we're reporting all youngsters who are, have freshman standing. So that's youngsters who were in the, in the high school as freshmen for their first year, but there are also youngsters who were in the, in the high school for their second year, they didn't, they didn't earn enough credits in their first year at the high school to earn sophomore status. So our freshman numbers-
A little higher than this?
Are higher than this number, which would be the first time only.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. McHugh?
Just, just briefly on the special education, would it be helpful maybe if you took the, the group and by, broke out what the group consists of, like by, I hate to use the word prototype, the old, I'm not sure how they're broken out now, because I'm sure that where, I think I have a feeling part of it is we tend to keep more students in district compared to some other school districts, that, that their population's different. And that might be part of that reason why I think that you're seeing a little bit lower rates, so maybe that was my suggestion as far as, you know, if you ask Paul to go back in, he could probably pull them out and just develop it a little differently.
Yeah, I thi- I think that's, uh, helpful, I think, I mean, this kind of report is helpful because you see, because it provokes questions, in some cases you, you know, it's, it's the very good news that we have significantly higher percent of youngsters who graduate in four years than the typical urban high schools, that's wonderful news. But then you also look at, gee, we're not much more successful with our Hispanic students than other schools, or, or gee, we're, seem to be less successful with our special educations, so what does that mean? And so we'll dig in and try to understand whether that's pointing to something that we need to do differently or whether there's an explanation that has to do with our high school being different in its, in its population.
Ms. Doherty? Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye, any opposed, the motion's approved. Uh, next report is on the MCAS partnership with Middlesex Community College, Madam Superintendent?
Um, yes, I thought it would be, uh, the committee members might, uh, find it, um, helpful to know that, um, the youngsters who don't graduate, uh, because they haven't passed the MCAS exam are not abandoned, uh, either by Lowell High School or by the state. And, uh, we're very fortunate to have, uh, at Middlesex Community College, one of the stronger programs, um, around the state uh, that, that, uh, that provides kids with a se- young people with a second, third, or even fourth chance to, uh, to, uh, uh, ta- do the coursework that enables them to learn, uh, the math and the ELA, uh, that they need. So, uh, MCC has earned, has earned some state grants to, uh, run, uh, programs. And, uh, you can see the results at the bottom of this report. Um, since, uh, two thousand and three, a total of a hundred and sixty students have participated in the Middlesex Community College Pathways Program, um, and have passed the MCAS test. Approximately a hundred of those, uh, are students, uh, that came from Lowell High School. So these are youngsters that, uh, that needed a different environment in which to, uh, to, uh, demonstrate proficiency through, through the, uh, uh, through the MCAS. And, um, in the most recent program has been the most best attended by Lowell High School students. So youngsters are getting the word and the guidance department at the high school is, I think, much more able to let kids know about this and encourage them and let them know about students who've been successful and, uh, and so, uh, forty-one Lowell High School students participated in the fall two thousand and six program. And already, um, fifteen passed the November retest in math, uh, ten passed, uh, the retest in English Language Arts. And, uh, of the students who were taking both math and, uh, ELA, uh, two passed the math and three passed the ELA, so those are, you know, you have your successes one at a time. And, uh, delighted that we have such a close collaboration with, uh, with Middlesex on this program.
Okay. Motion to accept the report by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Leahy, all those in favor say aye, any opposed, the report is accepted. Next is, uh, Mary Badger Galupo Forum Update, Madam Superintendent?
Um, yes, this is just a, a report from the Mary Badger Gluco- Galupo Educational Forum that was held on January twenty-second, uh, sponsored, cosponsored by the Citywide Parent Council, and these are the action groups that came out of that, uh, that work. Each one is, uh, being, uh, co-chaired by someone connected to the schools and someone from the community or a, another institution in the city. So, uh, we'll keep the committee informed, I know several committee members are actively involved in this.
Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty, all those in favor say aye, any opposed, the report is accepted. Next is the Teaching American History Project, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, I thought committee members, uh, would wanna have a copy of the final report that was, uh, sent to the, uh, Department of Education in Washington, summarizing the accomplishments of the Teaching American History Project, that was a three-year, one million dollar, uh, grant program that was, um, critical, uh, for us when we had no funding for professional development in areas other than the most essential uh, related to mathematics and English Language Arts and English Language Learners. Uh, we had the benefit of this terrific partnership. Uh, and it was really a, through it, we've been able to produce some outstanding teaching materials. Uh, and teachers have really, uh, been enthusiastic about the resources that are now available to them.
Questions? Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty, all those in favor say aye, any opposed, the report is accepted. Next, uh, school safety update, Madam Superintendent?
Uh, yes, this, on the school safety update, I wanna just, uh, talk about, um, Dolan Drills and Doors. Sergeant Jack Dolan has taken over as, um, supervisor of the school resource officers for the, for the police department. And he is, uh, making himself, uh, uh, familiar with the high school and the high school procedures, and he's already been out at some of, uh, some of our schools. Um, he's really doing a, a great job of picking up from, uh, from the good work that Sergeant Tim Crowley, uh, did. And, um, we'll be introducing him to, to all of the principals, uh, shortly at an administrative meeting. Uh, and, and, um, so we're looking forward to that. Uh, he, he was, uh, there were several, um, uh, police officers, uh, joined us at, uh, uh, our dr- uh, drill at the Riley School, uh, this morning. This is, uh, our, our series of drills, um, that are supervised drills to test out the procedures. Uh, this morning's was, um, was of a, of a hard lockdown. Uh, the way we do, the way we did that was to make sure families knew when it was gonna happen, uh, because it was designed, is not designed to be a surprise, it was designed to be practice and to really identify where, where might be the problems. And, uh, they discovered, for example, that, um, that, uh, in the cafeteria, the intercom system is really not loud enough to really command the attention that's needed for a hard lockdown, so uh, they are now, uh, thinking about how to use the bell system with a special ringing of the bell that would be known in the school as the signal for, uh, a hard lockdown. So it's really important for us to do these, do these drills really carefully, um, supported by the police, uh, and, and fire so that we can identify any of the, of the, uh, the factors that are specific to a building, uh, that could prove to be really problematic if we didn't practice these and we were trying to do it, uh, for real at some point. Wanted to also comment on doors, I know committee members have a little bit of information about this, but last week, um, at the, at the Moody School, uh, two reporters from Fox twenty-five News as part of a, a plan that they had to investigate security in schools all over eastern Massachusetts, uh, uh, arrived at, uh, a side door at the Moody School. Uh, the school had been left, the door had been left thejar by, uh, the mailman who had, the postman who had, uh, just finished his delivery. And they, uh, walked in that door and, uh, were able to, um, so they were able to get into the school, uh, past our security system. Now, security system is, always has several parts to it, so while they got in the door, within a fairly short period of time, an adult uh, met them, asked who they were, escorted them to the office, uh, whereupon they, uh, introduced themselves as news reporters from Fox twenty-five. And, uh, they left a survey for the principal to complete about security, uh, measures at the school, and I've left a copy of that, the completed survey, uh, on your, on your desks. The, uh, when they returned a day or two later, um, to, uh, they wanted to, uh, interview the principal, they revealed that they had had a hidden camera. And that they had done this in sixteen schools across eastern Massachusetts as a part of testing school security, uh, measures. Um, so we expect a, uh, expect to be part of a story, uh, and Fox twenty-five News reporting on the outcome of this, uh, this, uh, of this, this reporting method, that they, news gathering method. But it, it does, it does point to the importance of what the committee just talked about, the Subcommittee just earlier. This is a door that doesn't automatically close, and so, so if, and, and it, it needs to, it needs to be in tip-top repair so that it does close after, even when the mailman doesn't remember to close it behind him, it should automatically close. The procedures, as you, as you see from the survey, the procedures in place of having custodians check the doors, the perimeter doors in the morning, in midday, and in the afternoon are important measures, but as we know, they're not foolproof. So having a, having a second line of, of defense in terms of staff that really know what they're doing and really know, and are alert for strangers is, is important. I've been in conversation with Chief LaValle, and I expect that two things will come out of some additional support that the police will be able to provide us. They have a, they have, one of their officers is trained in what is, is called perimeter hardening activities, which have to do with being able to look at ways in which the perimeter of a site, in this case, a school building, might be, might be vulnerable to unauthorized people entering. So we're going to make use of his expertise to do some ongoing checks of our schools. And in addition, Chief LaValle thinks it will be possible to have the neighborhood, the, the police who are doing, who have that beat, to periodically stop and actually attempt to enter from a back door or a side door, just as a way of, of helping there be extra vigilance so that, so that we can ensure a high level of vigilance around, around intruders. So I wanted to keep the committee updated on the ongoing measures. I know the committee has wanted to make sure that our, our work in safety is not something we do in one month and, you know, don't come back to until three years later. But, so I wanted to assure you that we're taking it very seriously. And the Lowell Police Department continues to be exceedingly cooperative and helpful.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to update you that my kids, at, my children at the Riley School participated in the lockdown. They said it went very well. And you're right, that we talked about it, they sent home literature, we talked about it, and they were all excited, they had a good time. But it was very, it was dealt with in a very serious manner, and everything went very well. So, thank you.
Motion to accept the report by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. Recruitment. Madam Superintendent?
Uh, yes, you have a report that was also, I think, left on your desk this evening, prepared by Assistant Superintendent Duggan, in which she describes that since the 2004, 2005 school year, two hundred and five teachers have retired from the Lowell Public Schools. And the work that has been taken since then to, to attempt to replace veteran experienced educators. And this year, the year, this June, we expect far fewer. At this moment, only seventeen or eighteen members of the staff have identified that they expect to be retiring in June. We know that number will grow some as the spring comes, but it's still a much lower number, which is, which is good. And in her report, Ms. Duggan outlined some of the steps in place to, to do really thoughtful recruiting. And I just want to point to two. One is the cost of newspaper advertising has, has skyrocketed and it continues to, to increase. So the Superintendents Association across Massachusetts has developed a, has developed a method of, of organizing a statewide job posting system that they will advertise periodically in The Globe and other newspapers, but the, but the, the information about, the openings will be available on a, on a website. So we're, we're, we're early members of that, but within about five days of their announcing it, more than a hundred districts have signed up, because it's going to be a way to contain costs for advertising and still have the word out in, in what will become the, the place to look at for jobs across Massachusetts. So I, I think that's a, a very good initiative. The second, it will be the Third Annual Merrimack Valley Teacher Recruitment Fair, which Ms. Duggan was really instrumental in, in establishing. They'll be, we're going to hold that on March 1st at Lowell Memorial Auditorium from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Last year, more than eight hundred prospective teachers attended and met with Lowell School staff and provided resumes. And out of that, thirty teachers were hired. So thirty of the teachers now teaching in the Lowell Public Schools first came to our attention at the recruitment fair. So we know it's a valuable resource for us. We're terrifically grateful to the, the staff at the auditorium who provide us, provide a very good venue for that activity. Welcome any questions.
Motion to accept the report by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. McHugh. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the report is accepted. There is one item, one request for home education. So, motion approved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatakante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Okay. Next item is convention conference requests. We have three field trip requests and three athletic department requests.
Will approval be wanted?
Motion approved by Ms. Fatakante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McHugh?
Yes.
Mia Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatakante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Ms. Doherty?
Uh, yes, motion to suspend the rules for point of personal privilege, please.
I don't believe you have to suspend the rules.
Only if she puts on that Mr. Rogers sweater, that we make him put on.
If it's point of personal privilege, you don't need to, you don't need to suspend the rules.
You don't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do I need a second on it? I just wanted to call attention to my colleagues that there's a, a very brief memo from me just kind of updating the committee on the activities in Washington last week, what I learned and what I was advocating for. And if anybody has any questions or wants to discuss it, we can do it at another meeting. I'm making a
We're getting more money.
We actually, the plan right now is there's going to be more money that we will see very soon for FY 2007. It has to pass the Senate, and then of course it has to get through the president. But there is, you'll see this more money right in, in place for us to, we can take immediate impact with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion adjourned by Ms. Fatakante, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, the meeting stands adjourned.